Good evening. And welcome to the February 25th, 2025 Regular Session Meeting of City Council. If you are here tonight and would like to address council, please register with staff in the lobby. Please indicate item I for matters germane to City Council. We have a three-minute light system which you'll see on the podium, and we also have it right here. After stating your name and address, you will see a green light. After two minutes, you will see a yellow light. After three minutes, you will see a red light. At that time, please take your seat. Written remarks may also be handed to the city clerk to be made a part of the record. Copies of this ordinance regarding participation can be found at the desk in the lobby. At this time, please silence your phones. Prior to beginning the business portion of the meeting, Father George Chiroz with St. Constantine and Helen Greek Orthodox Church provide an invocation to council. Afterwards, Councilman Long will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. It is a practice of this council to stand for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Those who also wish to stand are welcome, under no obligation to do so. Thank you.
Let us pray. Lord our God, who has established the orders and hosts of angels and archangels in heaven to minister to your glory, grant that all those in attendance this evening have gathered so that the work of our city of Newport News will enable us to celebrate and glorify your goodness. Give wisdom to those who will speak and wisdom and understanding to those who ask. Make us all worthy as citizens of this great city of Newport News to offer our given abilities of time, treasure, and talent to ensure that good things will continue to happen, and we pray for protection of our city from wrath, famine, anger, and disease that could come against us and be gracious towards us. We pray for all those who will participate in the One City Marathon this weekend. May they arrive and depart in safety. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Will you follow me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have one presentation this evening. I'd like to invite Tina Sumter from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services to come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Tina Sumter from the Department of Criminal Justice Services. I'm here this evening with Harvey Powers, Department of Criminal Justice Services Law Enforcement Division Director. We are honored this evening to be for you to present the Newport News Police Department with the Certified Crime Prevention Communities Recertification. But before we present the certificate, let me give you a brief history on the Certified Crime Prevention Communities Program. The Certified Crime Prevention Communities Program was developed by the Department of Criminal Justice Services and approved by the Commission in the 1998 Executive Order, where Governor Gilmore charged the Commission with the responsibility of advising him on new initiatives to promote community safety, particularly family and youth safety. The Commission asked Department Criminal Justice Services to recommend programs that foster the development of community safety initiatives at the local levels. From the 1993 Crime Commission Study, Certified Crime Prevention Program was designed and approved. Out of all the communities throughout Virginia, including the city of Newport News, there is a total of 12 Certified Crime Prevention Communities. To obtain certification, the Newport News Police Department submitted application for recertification. They had to meet 19 community safety elements, and these included 12 core safety elements and a minimum of nine optional safety elements. This is an easy task and a tremendous amount of dedication, not only from the Newport News Police Department, but from your whole community. This is an accomplishment that the Police Department in your community should be very proud of. Throughout the review, it became clear that the success of the city of Newport News prevention efforts is due to four factors. Community interactions. The dedication of the Newport News Police Department personnel, not only to the Police Department, but to your community. Program development and finding ways to bridge identified gaps within the community during the COVID pandemic. City of Newport News application highlights continued growth, innovation, and finding ways to bridge these identified gaps. One of the highlights of the application that the Newport News is the Newport News Neighborhood Watch Coalition. It represents collaborative efforts between residents and the Police Department to safeguard communities against crime and enhance overall safety. Acting as a central governing body that oversees the coordinated activities of Neighborhood Watch groups fostering unity among neighbors and promoting vigilance activities suspicious behaviors. In 2020, the meetings went viral due to the COVID-19 pandemic. On December 5th, 2024, the Police Department was reaccredited, I'm sorry, recertified at the Criminal Justice Service Board and approved for recertification.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Harvey Powers. I'm the law enforcement director for DCJS. My team of 30 folks oversees all law enforcement training and certification for the Commonwealth of Virginia. I want to repeat just one simple thing because I know you've got a lot of important business to do tonight. There are 400 criminal justice agencies in the Commonwealth of Virginia. There are 12 that have achieved Certified Crime Prevention Community Status. Just 12. And this cannot be done without an amazing and strong partnership between your law enforcement organization, the other governmental entities, nonprofits, churches, youth engagement across the board. This is not a bureaucratic paper chase. This is something that demonstrates a real and true ongoing commitment by your agency to making sure they're providing the ultimate safety that they can. And not only is it the right thing to do, but upon completion, it also enhances your chances for grants from the state, which can never be a bad thing. So with that, I'd like to invite Chief Drew and his team up, and we'll present them with the certificate, and I'd be glad to answer any questions for my team if you have any.
Why don't we have you get actually on here and then come and take the photo? So just come right here. Yeah, right there. Yeah, you can step up there. Yeah, there you go. It's brand-new carpet. Yeah, right there, right there.
Can I get some over on this side, please? Thank you. All right. Sorry, y'all. And one, two, three, look at me. Look at me. And look at me. And then let's plan to also do one out there, just in case, okay?
Congratulations once again. And Chief Drew, before you go, I think there's another presentation or there's two people that are going to come up. Perfect, yeah, let's have them come up next. It might be a long one tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Massimiliano Ariano, a co-president for the YIPC. The YIPC, or the Young Adult Police Commissioners Program, is a youth advisory board that is conducted in partnership with the City Newport News Public Schools and the Newport News Police Department. This board was created by the chief police in 2018 to build a better relationship between the Newport News Police Department and the youth in the city of Newport News. YIPC normally consists of 24 youth representing one student per grade level of the six Newport News high schools. We were recommended by the school principals, counselors, and the Newport News Police School resources officers. This is the first year that we've had 47 YIPC students for enrollment, almost double. The Young Adult Police Commission provides us an opportunity to have a voice and say that about issues that affect us. Our motto is bringing youth to the conversation. This program also provides opportunities for youth to partner with police on problem-solving strategies and discuss policing in general to give them a better understanding of what the Police Department actually does in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Tyler McNally. I'm a junior at Demby High School. The Young Adult Police Commission helps us build relationships with police officers. We learn from them, and they learn from us. YIPC allows us to have a voice and opinions on topics that we discuss about current events that are happening in our city. This year in YIPC, we have utilized the distracted driver and fatal vision goggles to understand the consequences of texting and drinking while driving. We participated in drone flying and practiced interviewing skills with the N and Police Department. As community helpers, we assisted at the Martin Luther King Day food drive, assisted with the Christmas for the children with Dr. Cherry and giving back to the community clothing and toy drive. A YIPC student is given the opportunity to speak at the Newport News Police Department Basic Telecommunication Academy graduation, basic law enforcement graduations, and police promotion ceremonies. I had the opportunity to be a guest speaker. This opportunity allows us to bridge the gap between police stereotype and the youth in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am Samaya Tate, a junior at an achievable dream and a co-president, a co-vice president for YIPC.
You can move the mic down, it's fine. There you go.
The years I have served with YIPC has served a deep connection and bond between myself and the officers of the Newport News Police Department, especially Chief Drew, Lieutenant Allen, Chief Creswell, and all the rest of the amazing officers and SROs. I witnessed firsthand their dedication and compassion and unwavering commitment to protecting and serving our community. It was through this bond that I developed a love for YIPC and a desire to see more officers actively involved in our neighborhoods. The Newport News Police Department officers and civilians meet with the YIPC students every Wednesday. We have open conversations of expectations of the Newport News Police Officers, and we discuss their expectations of the youth in the community. I hope and pray that the officers will continue to make a positive impact on our community, and I am forever grateful for the positive impact you, they all have had on our lives so far. YIPC is growing in numbers as we, the students, look forward to meeting with the officers weekly. The information they share will help us to be positive students and community helpers. YIPC helps us with social skills, life skills, and choices, career-building skills, college skills, and always allows us to have and a voice and be heard. Thanks for affording us the opportunity to speak before you on this evening.
Thanks, and we'll clap for all three of you. Thanks. Public hearings, page four. Item E1 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing change of zoning, Charlie Zulu dash 2024 dash 0001 to Fort Eustis Investment Partners LLC, from R4, single-family dwelling, to R7, medium-density multiple-family dwelling with proffers for a 6.297-acre parcel located at 628 and 634 Old Fort Eustis Boulevard. At this time, are there any speakers? I see we have about 15 speakers. I will call them in the order that appears in front of me. Michael Massey. I know we have a lot of speakers, so just page into the clock and the city clerk.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I'm Michael Massey. I represent Alvin Keels, who's the managing partner in this property. He's with Fort Eustis Investment Properties. He seeks the ordinance to build 120 apartments on that property. When he initially hired me for this property, for this project, I asked him to look at the city's comprehensive plan to see if what he wanted to do would be consistent with that plan. And when we did that, we realized that what he did want to do was in fact consistent with One City, One Future, 2040, the comprehensive plan of the city. So that's why I advised him to proceed with the project. Commercial development is very difficult, is a very difficult endeavor to get involved with because the dollar values are so high. I'm going to tell you a little bit about Mr. Keels. We have our architect here to answer any technical questions you may have, and we have our engineer here as well if you have any questions for them. Mr. Keels is a former sports agent. He did that from 2001 to 2023, handling over a billion dollars in contracts for professional athletes. And he's been in real estate, commercial real estate, since 2017. I mention that because in deciding to go forward a project like this, you want to be sure that there is some legitimacy in the person who wants to do the project. So we have a couple of projects I also assisted them on, two in Portsmouth. One, it's called The King's Landing on High Street. It's in our new innovative district in Port Smith downtown, once you cross over Atherton Ham Street going away from downtown. And then in the Capitol Manor section, there's a project called The Landings at Greenwood. That's a project with 280 apartment units, and the townhouses are the project at King's Landing downtown. And that's 49 townhouses. I should tell you, I have letters from our senior finance group, Dollar Bank, and we are willing to share those with you. Dollar Bank has given a line of credit of 32 million, 32.5 million for the Greenwood project and 4 million line of credit for the townhomes downtown. And again, I mentioned that just so that you can see that Mr. Keels, even though he is a bit of a young fellow, he has the ability to handle projects of this size. I've worked with Mr. Keels on a number of projects, almost all of his big projects that he has endeavored to take on. He has proven to me to be an honest person, sophisticated person, reliable person. I think that what he would do for the city would be to make the city very proud. I think the project would be something that you can brag upon, and I think also that it would help in your increased need for housing in Newport News. And with that, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank, all right, thank you all.
Mr. Jack Claude.
I'm Jack Claude, I'm the engineer that he just spoke about. Our firm has been working with Alvin for about five years now. We've got multiple projects that are going great. The community seems to really like them. The one thing I really wanted to bring up in this discussion is, in planning commission, there were some concerns about drainage, and I think this area does not drain well today. What we do is, when we come in, we design the site. We capture all the rainwater that comes down on the property, any rainwater that also may run off from adjacent properties, and we channel all that water into a drainage system. Once we capture all that water, we maintain it, manage it, and then let it out slowly, and the state requires us to do that. If there happens to be some drainage issue that's in the vicinity of the property line, maybe a neighbor's backyard, quite often, it's very easy for us to pick that up and account for it through the system. Those small little pockets are not that big a deal to take care of. It's just normal in our course of business to do that. I think that's about all I've got right now, but if anybody's got any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer anything I can about this development.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Risa Craver.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here on behalf of Wood Creek Homeowners Association. I am one of the board of directors, and I'm also the treasurer of the association. We just don't like this apartment complex coming so close to the homeowner's property. It's very, very close. It's smack up against them. They can't really enjoy the quiet living that they bought a house to live in there. There are supposed to be 120 units. You take those 120 units, two cars per unit. You have 240 cars that are in this small area. We've already had a fatality two weeks ago at Jefferson and Fort Eustis Boulevard. It's oversaturated now with cars. This isn't a good thing to have right at the moment. It's not going to increase our property when you have an apartment complex with noise, 240 cars there, and these people are really concerned about that. We've been at the planning commission hearing, and they opposed it 6 to 2. I think they understand where we are as homeowners. So we just want you to know that this isn't ideal for our area this time, and we wanted to let you know that. We couldn't have a lot of people come tonight that were homeowners. Some are elderly, don't drive at night, others can get a babysitter. But it's something that we need you to consider. These people don't want to move. They bought these houses because this was the area they wanted to live in. And it's quiet, and they enjoy it, and they don't want to move, and they don't want all the traffic. Maybe there'll be a light there sometime, but we don't know that. And people are not going to wait for a light when they can make a U-turn and come up and go down Wood Creek Road in the Wood Creek Development. The 7-Eleven is there, so everybody comes this way because it's easier to get out of the development using Wood Creek Road. So we tried to have roundabouts put in or, you know, some bumps, and we haven't been able to do that yet, but we're still trying because of the volume of traffic that's there. We have a lot of little kids, too, and people that walk in, their dogs. We've had several accidents at the corners, at the curves, and it's just, it's frightening to these people. And so we just wanted you to consider our thoughts on this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Rhoda Young.
I was truly hoping, and I was truly praying that I would be called after that statement that she just made. And this is why they've been privileged for so many years. They think that they own Newport News. They do not own Newport News, Virginia. They cannot allow apartment buildings to be built in other part of Newport News, Virginia, but they think they too good to get apartment building in their community, not on our watch. If an apartment building can be built on Jefferson, it can be built also where they live and reside at, too. We all have to deal with the rising of people in our community. The world is growing, and we're not just going to spoon-feed them so they can be comfortable and everybody else uncomfortable. I came from Norfolk, Virginia to hold y'all accountable for what's going on at the city council meeting. I brought my platform here to let them see what decision that y'all decided to make. When y'all stood out there, y'all asked for us to vote, y'all said y'all gonna give us a better lifestyle. Now, Mr. Avrind's trying to offer a better lifestyle for our community, affordable housing, luxury housing, something that some of us would never have the opportunity to have if it wasn't for him giving us this opportunity. We gonna hold each and every last one of you guys accountable. I want to know which one vote yes, and I want to know which one vote no. Because the last developer developed over seven projects in this community, and he was white. I said it. He was white, and my husband's white, and I love white men, sorry, okay? Anyway, but I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. But anyway, he was white, and he got seven yes from y'all to develop in our community. We have one black man that's coming to dump money and resources into our community. How are we going to turn our back on a black-owned company that's trying to build up our community? So how are we going to tell him no, and for what reason will we tell him no? Let's make that make sense. Now, y'all standing up here, we always say we always got the short end of the stick because the white people head the city council, and we had the opportunity to have it our way because we didn't have people that looked like us to speak up for us, but now we have it. You brown skin, so you brown, all right? So seven brown city councilmen up there, y'all gotta make a difference. Y'all gotta show us it's power in numbers, and we voted for the right people to be in office so that we can have an opportunity that we have been denied for hundreds of years. Not this year, 2025, but hundreds of years. Y'all can make history as the first black city councilman in the state of Virginia. Newport News been doing amazing job with development. I take my hat off to y'all. I toot the horn to y'all, but y'all gotta show up. Y'all gotta show out on this one. Norfolk State University showed up and showed out with Mr. Vit, going to be the coach of Norfolk State University. Let Newport News show out, and let Avrind and his team come build something here in Newport News for us. It's our time to eat. It's our time. Let us eat.
Mr. Chris Elam, or Elam?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Chris Elam. I'm with, I'm an architect with RBA Architects out of Chesapeake, and representing Alvin and in this development, Fort Eustis Investment Partners. I just wanted to take a moment to go through, to start with, some of the reasons that multifamily housing is right for this lot. One, as previously mentioned, it aligns with the comprehensive plan, which suggests medium-density housing for the property, and that designation would allow for, the math works out to 150 units on this particular parcel, but we're actually proposing 120 units, so a little bit below what the comprehensive plan, you know, is suggesting. And another reason that, you know, we feel like it's a really good fit is just the need in this community, as well as in many communities, for workforce housing. The site is proximate, obviously, to Fort Eustis and has a very direct access to the shipyards. And we feel like, in both cases, the type of housing that we're planning, that we're proposing to provide is ideal, you know, for the folks that are represented by those two establishments. And so, you know, we feel that, in particular, we're excited by the development team's intention to create a really high-quality housing that still is affordable and workforce housing. is affordable and workforce housing, and we really believe in the product that they're putting together. I'd like to touch on a few of the design characteristics that we've incorporated thus far. We're still very preliminary, obviously, you know, some renderings in the site plan, but we feel like there's a number of things, actions that we've taken, design concepts that we've incorporated, that'll help to mitigate some of the concerns about a higher-density development type adjacent to the residential property, the single-family residential, that is. For one, we've concentrated the apartment units on the western side of the property and left the eastern side with less of the apartment units, and at the southeast corner, where the property is surrounded by the most single-family residential properties, we've included the amenities package, clubhouse, pool, and a large open green space. And my time's running a little short, and I had a bunch of other bullet points I wanted to touch on, but I'll leave off there and just, I'm available for additional questions, to be sure, about the architectural character of the buildings and the site configuration that we'd be happy to talk further about.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Dawn Moses?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Dawn Moses, and I am a citizen of Hampton Roads. As a citizen of Hampton Roads, I was very excited to hear about this new venture that was coming to the city of Newport News. The citizens of Newport News have the opportunity to live comfortable. 120 apartments on the property is doable, just like everyone here has spoken before me has said so. The workforce of City of Newport News, I have worked for. I have worked for the Department of Social Services for seven and a half years for the City of Newport News. I have worked for the Department of Services, Social Services, for the City of Hampton for seven and a half years. I am currently working for the Department of Social Services in the City of Portsmouth. Affordable housing is one of the major and number-one issues that people have in the communities. Housing is not just for affluent people. Housing and affordable housing is for everyone that can afford the housing, and it sounds like these gentlemen, this investment group, is bringing just that. I personally do business in the City of Newport News. I own a business in the City of Hampton, so I cross paths with all citizens of Hampton Roads. And again, housing is always a major concern with those citizens of these different cities. So I say to you today, please consider this venture with the City of Newport News, as it will bring most people joy that did not think that they could afford affordable luxury I am not rich, neither am I poor. I want to live comfortable, as most of you do, as most of us do. If this could bring that to citizens of Newport News, as mentioned, the military, the shipyard, all of those people need housing. Our cities are small, they are not big, so building is sometimes always an issue, but we seem to make it work when we need to, and I think we need to make this work. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Marcus Sims?
Your Honor, members of Newport New York City Council, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here just to address the developmentist project and the person behind it. Just recently, I took a position over at Fort Eustis. So in taking that position, I was looking for housing on this side of the water. I'm originally from the City of Portsmouth, and I couldn't find anything that I liked near my job. So now I'm forced to commute from downtown Hampton to Fort Eustis every day, fight through traffic. So when Alvin mentioned that he was building a place like, or he was looking to build a place like this, I thought it was perfect. I didn't expect to come in here and hear any opposition. I didn't expect to hear citizens of this group opposing it because it makes sense for the city. As I look at my staff that I have to look at every day, and I hear those communications, and I hear them talk about the distance that they have to drive just to come to work. Most would like to be able to come, because we already have to fight through the gate every morning just to get in from all of the soldiers and everybody else coming in. So the closer that we're able to be to our jobs, the better our lives will be and the more we can enrich the communities around us. Also, knowing Alvin, I've known Alvin now since 1997. We both went to Elizabeth City State University together. Over the years, we've had several business ventures together. We are paths crossed multiple times. So if there is one person that I trust to develop a project like this for the people that need a project like this, it would be Alvin Kill's. What he brings to the table and what he represents is going to be an excellence that is only measured because he is from the area. He isn't a faceless corporation in Pennsylvania, in Illinois, in Ohio. This is somebody who grew up right here in Hampton Roads. He's done business pretty much with everybody that we all respect and love from this area. So for a project like this to come about, to have a person like him to bring it, it only makes sense for Newport News to continue the growth and the track that it's already been on by granting and approving a project like this. So I'll see the rest of my time to anybody else that needs to speak.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anton Rikun, apologies if that's the, you know, said it wrong.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, hello, City Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So as a gentleman was just speaking, he doesn't like to fight traffic at the gate, at the base. Well, guess what? There's going to be another traffic jam in this neighborhood because there's going to be only a single exit and single entrance for the 200 cars that they plan to fit into that property. All right, there was just a little segue. Anyway, so my wife and I here, we bought our house in 2020, and when we bought it, we thought, hey, we found a gem because it's in a nice, quiet neighborhood, it's surrounded by the trees on one side, and we bought it in the summer, and everything was green and blooming, and it was just beautiful, and we loved it. And when we bought the house, we knew that the zoning was going, was our, was a single-family zoning for that property, and we had no idea it was going to change. Our neighbors who bought their house in our neighborhood 40 years ago, they had no idea that the housing, the zoning will change at some point. Maybe they would have bought it at a different place. Also, another point I want to mention is the apartment complexes usually build up the ground, build it up a little bit, and they slant it inwards for the retention ponds, but the outer perimeter of the property still is going to be slanted, and our backyard is right behind the fence, right at the property border there. So I just assume all the rainwater that drops on that perimeter will just go straight into my backyard. Also, another point to mention, so the distance, our backyards in the property, in that neighborhood, that border, that Old Fort Eustis properties, we have very, very tiny backyards. The distance from my backyard, distance from my house to the fence is 28 feet, and we have a little sunroom, and from distance from the sunroom to the fence is 15 feet. And I know that Mr. Coffey have already mentioned that at our meeting yesterday, and that they plan to put a buffer of 60 feet between my, our fences and the house, but I just, I don't see how that would work in any of our favors. Also, I would like to mention that even if the decision is going to be made today to go for this rezoning, if you, if the city council could impose some conditions on, say, if the developer can put very big and wide trees to cover the, to block the view, that would be great. All right, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Tatiana Rikun?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
And members of City Council. My name is Tatiana Rikun, and I'm here today as a concerned resident of the Wood Creek Neighborhood to express my strong opposition to the rezoning of 628 and 634 Old Fort Eustis Boulevard, Newport News. From the start, this protest has lacked transparency. The developers purchased this land in August with specific plans in mind and submitted it to rezoning without consulting with the community. We only found out about it a week before the first hearing from City Council Planning Commission. Did they reach out us beforehand to address our concerns? No. We saw them for the first time at the hearing on February 5th, no prior engagement. The developers have also demonstrated a lack of respect to regulations. Kenneth Coffey was putting unstamped brochures inside of people's mailboxes, which is federal crime. Also, he has been driving a car with an expired registration for nearby two years. So if they discard a basic laws, how can we trust them with mature development? Mr. Kenneth Coffey and Mr. Alvin Kill, they probably will give a speech later, and they will likely claim that 200 neighbors were surveyed with 80% being neutral about this construction, but where is the proof? Have they provided signatures, petitions, or any verifiable documentation? Meanwhile, we can provide evidence from over 100 families that opposite this project. They are deeply concerned about increasing 120 to 100 more cars, worsening an already dangerous traffic situation. The intersection at Fort Eustis Boulevard and Jefferson Avenue, it's from the survey, it's ninth dangerous intersection already. Will they make it more dangerous? Our community already struggles with parking congestion and safe roads. We are only about that. This development, it's simply too large for this small plot of land. It's six acres I'm talking about, so especially with only one small exit. So this apartment complex has one small exit to Fort Eustis, Old Fort Eustis Boulevard, which barely fit two cars. So this is pretty dangerous situation right now, and we don't want more traffic accidents. Traffic lights will not solve this. We support responsible development, though, so we're not against development in general, but we, as this massive project, it's a little bit, you know, crazy. Yeah, thank you for your attention, for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Cheyenne Fowler? Apologies. You're good. Yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm going to tell you guys the first things I told my neighbors. When I learned about this project, I thought to myself, hey, I live right up against these trees. I like these trees, but you know what? They don't belong to me, so if a developer buys the land and wants to develop on it, that's their right. So at first, I wasn't too against it until I looked at the actual detailed plans, and this is why I'm standing before you right now, because I need to be perfectly clear. I don't have an issue with the developer or even affordable, you know, living. Instead, I have a plan or a problem with the issue or their plan as it relates to public safety. Now, to understand what I mean, would it be possible for me to show you two images real quick?
We don't do the images, but you can just give them to the city clerk, and she'll give it to us.
Okay.
Just that way, it's fair to everyone.
Okay, yeah, so, long story short, this apartment complex is located along one road. That's it. We have one road for people to get in, and most importantly, out of the apartment complex, and it butts up against an entrance that can fit two cars, well, two and a half if you really cram them in there, but two full-size cars at any time. Now, right now, it's not that big of a deal. It doesn't take much for traffic to build up. There's nothing coming in in opposition. This plan calls for 120-unit apartment complex and all those residents to compete, to fight for that spot with two vehicles that can get out at any given time. Bear in mind, you also have to cross both lanes of traffic if you want to get on I-64. You can see how this could end up being a dangerous situation, especially as people are trying to pull into the neighborhood, as people are trying to exit. So the big question is, well, what do you do about it? Well, you can go ahead and build a traffic light, or maybe the developer could offer to build it for you as an incentive, but that's not really going to solve the issue too much, just because, well, now you're going to have people competing, making impulsive decisions to make the green light, all the while, traffic builds up on one of the busiest intersections in Hampton Roads. This isn't a problem with building affordable housing. I think most of us would agree in this room that, yeah, we'd love it. My main issue is that there seems to be no good solution around this because you can't build a second road. The people in this apartment complex, they are stuck on one road as everyone's competing to get out. These guys have nowhere to go. There is no second road. There is no other entrance, entrance to the neighborhood. That is it. So my concern, as somebody who's lived here since the 90s, is that as all these people compete to get out, somebody's going to get hurt. Many people may get hurt. We already have that problem, and somebody eventually is going to get killed. And like I said, I'm not against affordable housing, but what I ask the city to do tonight is to consider the safety of both current and future Newport News residents. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Ann Iverson?
Hi, hi, everybody.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening.
First of all, I want to thank God for allowing me to be here on this day that my mother passed, and I have, thank you, and I had a niece that just passed not even hours ago. Housing in Newport News matter. People matter. I've been, I am 65 years of age. I have seen high-end neighborhoods, middle-class neighborhoods, low-income neighborhoods, and I have seen homeless people. Truth be told, I was one of them. I've been here, thank God. I'm so proud of my son, Allen Iverson, and his partner, Alvin Kill, who wants to generate affordable housing, which will create jobs for Newport News, Virginia. Let's continue to make Newport News great and a brother place to live. Let's show the people in our town they matter, and we care about their well-being. What's wrong with showing human kindness and real love for one another? Let's live better together to provide jobs for those who need them. God has placed in these young men a vision on their heart. They want to give back to the community and meet the needs of other people, meaning the people in our community. It touches my heart to hear some of these, I'm going off my grid right now. It's touching my heart to hear some of these people talk because I've been a resident of, off of Fort Eustis Boulevard for many years. I got there in 1986. When I got there, I was the only black. I was told to leave, knock over mailbox and everything, but I'm still there. I've been there 28 years, and my neighbors love me, and I love my neighbors. All you got to do is just open up your heart, let these people have a roof over their head, and just provide some jobs for them. You know, my thing is, we all living in this world together. Some- Somebody got to make a move. Somebody got to care about other people. Somebody just got to care, and that's what I'm about. I'm about caring, I'm about love. I'm a fight this thing, just like I fought for getting my baby out of the city jail. I'm a fight to make this happen, because somebody got to make room for these people. They can't just say, no, you can't stay here, because we're comfortable. Oh, okay, they were comfortable when I moved in off of Fort Eustis, but they're more comfortable still now. Don't have, don't have no problem with me, but at the end of the day, I have a problem with people saying that they can't make room for other people, because we all need to live. God bless all y'all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
DK?
Good evening. I guess y'all didn't hear him. He called me by my personal name, DK. So that means that I have a personal connection with a lot of you guys up here, right? And for this opportunity for Mr. Iverson and his partners to come into our community, if it's about two hundred cars being parked, let me tell you, I work in the shipyard, and every day, they building a new building out here, and they taking away parking from us. But we, as shipyard workers, find a way to get to work and get home. So if it's about the safety, you guys have given us traffic lights, maybe an officer, whatever it needs to be. The community, you guys, city council, and developments come together, make a plan, and make it happen, right? The concern is about two hundred cars. Well, for us, that's two hundred cars worth of property taxes, more money, revenue coming into our city. For us, as you all know, the shipyard, I don't think y'all know, but every day, we having meetings about ramping up, hiring new people. They need somewhere to stay. And that place to stay, I believe they would love to stay in the city of Newport News, where it's closer for them to get to and from work. I just wanted to come up here on behalf of the Iverson family and the developers, and as you see, like you said, you call me DK, that's a personal connection. I have a personal connection with them. If we talking about just two hundred cars, that's all I've been hearing about is, it's going to be crowded in the neighborhood. Well, they building buildings every day in the shipyard, taking away parks, and I got to get up three o'clock in the morning to get to work. So we have less parking, but it's more of us getting to and from work, and you guys have made ways, you putting out lights so people don't get hit no more, you put traffic lights up. So whatever it takes, it should be a collaborative thing, coming together, meeting together. Forget about us as people, black, white, it's talking about a community. Our community is thriving, and we are really thriving. My last thing I want to say is, I got lost one day, and I was riding on ninety-five, and it made me get on three oh-one to get back home. As I was riding, I noticed that in this community, they was just developing things, and there was a cop on every block. And I'm like, yo, what in the world is going on? Thinking the president is going on out here or something. But what I saw was, it was, I think I was in Dump Free, Virginia. I seen a clean neighborhood with development and homes and people living together, thriving together. We need each other to all thrive. We need the city council, the developers, the people who live in that neighborhood now, all sit down, come to a common ground, and let's make it happen. That's what we need to do. Don't come in here bickering and fighting. Let's make it happen for our community. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Thank you. And last one, Mr. Alvin Keels.
How you doing today?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I came in with a script, but I'm going to go off of that. You know, I'm going to speak from the heart tonight. About twenty-five years ago, Alan Iverson gave me an opportunity. He actually brought me into the sports management business. I worked with his lawyer at the time, Lawrence Woodward, and I started my sports career there, and I branched off, did my own thing, and was able to build a multimillion-dollar sports agency over the last twenty years. Me and Bubba Chuck, as you guys call him, I call him Bubba Chuck too, we've made millions of dollars through sports and entertainment. Millions. You know, we got out of Hampton Roads, and we went down separate paths, but it's kind of the same path. Same path that Mike took, same path that Antoine Batte took. We all did the same thing. And we decided, I told Bubba Chuck five years ago, when I really got heavy into real estate, I said, I'm coming to your neck of the woods, and when I do, man, I want you to be my partner. And if y'all know Chuck, he doesn't do business with anybody. You know, he's very selective of his circle. I've been fortunate enough to be in his circle for twenty-five years. I've never asked him for anything. You know, never asked him for anything but support, you know? And so we decided that we were going to take our hard-earned money and reinvest in the city of Newport News. I took my hard-earned money and reinvested it into the city of Portsmouth. Anybody, if you guys want to fact-check, double-check behind me, we always give back to the community. This is going to be an opportunity for African-Americans to get our piece. And that's what I explained to Chuck. I said, dude, it's a whole business world out here that we've been shut out from because we didn't have the knowledge. But, you know, I went out and hustled, got the knowledge, and I'm passing it on to my people. I hear all of the complaints about the traffic. Man, I, I, we had a community meeting yesterday. Sorry that it was on short notice of this council meeting. Everything kind of moved fast, but, you know, we'll proffer a stoplight. It's not a problem. You know, that intersection is dangerous today, you know? So we'll proffer the stoplight. That's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we'll invest in making that intersection safer. And so this is affordable housing, market rate housing. We're going to have stainless steel appliances, luxury vinyl floors. We're going to have a swimming pool, fitness center. This is going to be a nice addition to the community. We're going to pay estimated two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in taxes over ten-year period. That's two point five million dollars that can go back into the community of Newport News. We're just asking for an opportunity. Bubba Chuck's asking for an opportunity. You know, you guys have always stood behind him. My community's always stood behind me. You know, we just, we just want a chance. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Taken. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Sorry, just one sec. Also, does everyone's iPad still work, or is it a verbal vote?
Make sure you cut the iPad on first. Yes, it's coming up.
Just give it, just give us one second. Okay, I think it's still booting up. Let's just do a verbal.
Do the swipe up.
Swipe it up.
From the bottom, yeah.
Are we good? One sec, Tina. Okay, is all council good? All right, so this is for, just to close the public hearing. There's no discussion. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you, sir. At this time, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
That's to close the public hearing. So a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Is moved and seconded. At this time, is there any discussion? I know we have discussion. We'll start, we'll start with the people whose district's in, in the North District. So we'll start with those two first, whichever order. Gentlemen.
Sure, I don't mind kicking it off. First of all, appreciate everyone coming out. Please, the look on my face, I have a two-week-old, so forgive me. I am a little sleep deprived for sure, but there was no way I was going to miss this because it was, it was, it was important to be here to speak to this. What I want to start off by saying is, you know, you heard a lot about a comprehensive plan, right? So for those that do not know, every, I don't know the exact length, every council, every five years, maybe, that's what I'll say, has the opportunity to review this comprehensive land plan. The council that you see before you right now has not had the opportunity to do that. So when we talk about affordable housing, right, housing is a very complex issue, very, very complex. So when we talk about our unhoused population, when we talk about affordable housing, all of that needs to be encompassed, and we must be strategic in what we do across the city. We cannot just say, all right, you know, we're going to do apartments here, we're going to do apartments here. In Newport News right now, whether it's fifty or fifty-two percent, that is how many people rent in Newport News right now. And as a council, we have to decide, what is the strategic vision for our housing going forward? Do we want more people that own in Newport News? Or do we want to be known as the community that rents way more than people that own in Newport News? But the point is, we have not had that opportunity to deep dive into those conversations. We have been talking about housing for a very, very long time in spurts, right? I mean, we all are very, very busy, but this is, is the time where we need to focus and align our strategic planning and mission and vision as it relates to housing. So I am, I am not in favor of supporting this tonight. I also want to mention that the council, I watched the planning commission meeting, and it's no one's fault, right? This is, when you get new leadership, stuff like this happens. There's going to be some, some kinks that you have to work out. But what was mentioned was, you know, this is the desires of council, right? Again, no, it's no one's fault, but that is not this council. We, this, not only just a majority, the supermajority of the people that you see right now did not approve that plan, and we are waiting to get that opportunity to discuss that as a team. So that is why I am, I am not supporting this tonight, because we have to have that conversation. I believe that the traffic, traffic study was more than adequate. So again, it is not about the traffic study. This is solely an opportunity for us to decide what kind of housing do we want going forward, and we need to be strategic about it, because if we are not strategic about it, it will not be sustained. Ms. Iverson mentioned our unhoused population. As of right now, we are the only ones in the region that give a damn about our unhoused population because of what we do for them. And because of that, other localities know that, and so they try to push those individuals here. We don't mind, you know, if you, that's what you want to do, we will take care of them, but everybody needs to carry their weight, and everybody needs to contribute to that issue. So that being said, I, I hear you all, I feel you all, but I cannot support that tonight because I know I have to give our council the opportunity to discuss long-term what housing is going to be. So that is all that I have to say, Mr. Mayor.
I think next up, we'll go to the other member who's in the district, Councilman Harris.
Yes, I would just share this, and I appreciate everybody who came out on tonight to share their perspective, feedback on this project. I want to say this because the word was mentioned, collaboration, making things happen. There was a meeting last night. I was able to be there for a few minutes because I had another obligation that I had to attend, but I was grateful for those that were able to attend and grateful for Mr. Keels to conduct that, conduct that meeting last night. What I came out of it with, because I had a conversation with our planning commission chair, Mr. Michael Taylor, who was first against the project through the planning commission, but after that meeting, he did say that he was, he would recall that vote based on what he heard last night. What he had heard was that there was adjust, that would be additional adjustments to a proffer, including going from a thirty-feet to sixty-foot buffer, from what I was hear, what I heard. Adding a traffic light was what I heard, and in addition to that buffer, to have higher trees to make sure that buffer would be sufficient for the community to the complex. With that being said, if we were to move forward with that, we still couldn't pass this ordinance because the proffer would have to be updated for us to relook at that, this as an ordinance to be passed for this zoning to be changed. So what, and I don't know how that process would look, but for us to relook at that, we would have to go through that process of looking at the rezoning, but the adjusted proffers in order for us to make the, what we're looking at doing for the project with relation to what even one of the citizens said, that they would be fine with that. Is that what I heard from a conversation we had earlier today? So I just want to let you know that, that I can't pass that without the additional proffers being added to the ordinance. That's all I have.
I'm going to speak last, so I'll let the, is there anyone else? Any further comments from city council?
I do.
Yep.
So I want to say thank you for everyone that came out tonight. I also took all your emails and read it. When I look at applications, I look at the big picture. Most recently, Newport News, we had a housing study, and we created this housing study to look at affordability in city Newport News, to look at the different housing choices that we had available, and to look at what our needs were over the next twenty, thirty years. One thing, I would agree, we didn't need, we do need more apartments complexes in Newport News. The reason I say that is, out of this study, it stated that we needed about thirteen hundred units over the next eight years. It also stated that our vacancy rate for apartments is two and a half percent. So if we need to keep thirteen hundred over the next eight years, if we do not add apartments to our rolls with a, with a low vacancy rate of two and a half percent, we would see rents go up. One thing, I think I heard someone mention this, it is unaffordable for most of our residents to live in Newport News to rent a home. About sixty-seven percent of people that rent in Newport News pay more than thirty percent of their income compared to if you own a home, it's like around thirty-one percent. So I'm going to be in favor of this tonight, because I want to see more housing options be available for people, so they can get to a space where if they do not want to rent, they want to buy a home one day, they're not spending more than thirty percent of their income because they can't save the money for a down payment to actually buy a house one day. So we do need to have more conversations, I do believe, about our housing in our city Newport News, but I don't want to stop the project moving forward because right now, there are people that need more affordable housing in Newport News, and I want to be a part of that solution to help people that want to put more money back into their pockets versus having to pay money out of their pockets from their income.
Thank you. Councilman Ely?
I just want to thank everybody for coming here today. Thank this council for just being willing to just listen to everyone. I hear your concerns. I hear what's needed in Newport News. When Mr. Alvin Keels called me about his project, I said, wow, this is a great project. I know the people that I serve, it may be a little bit different than the people of their friends, but a lot of my friends, they're paying to stay out in Marina Parkside for a three-bedroom, twenty-five hundred dollars. I know people who's paying rent. Is my friend in South Port Ward got a nice, beautiful home, her mortgage is thirteen hundred dollars. So it's a disconnect for somebody to want to come in our community to build nice, luxury, affordable homes, it's just like, it's kind of like a no-brainer. And we do the, we do the comprehensive study every five years. So what we supposed to do? Wait another five years or wait another two years before we start building homes? What, what are we saying? Progress stops until we start the whole progress again for a comprehensive plan? People need homes. People want to live in Newport News. A lot of my friends said, man, I want to live in Newport News, like the gentleman is saying, they're working for uses, but I have to live in Hampton or Portsmouth, because be honest, there's not too much nice, quality, luxury stuff in Newport News. It's just not. And when Mr. Alvin Keels said, I said, when he talking about the project, he said, yeah, I paid a million dollars for that land. I said, a million dollars? I said, well, I heard different. He sent me the stuff where he paid a million dollars for the land. This man invested, him and Mr. Iverson invested a million dollars in Newport News going by the comprehensive plan, the R-City hose. When you're in business, like me, a businessman, I'm not going to wait and say, okay, there's another election in two years, or there's another election in four years. I can't think about developing because I got to wait to see what this council's doing. We have so many projects in Newport News going on that are amazing projects that was way before our time. But what we do, we had them river cuttings, and I'm saying to the old council member, thank you, Ms. Vick, Mr. Coleman, me too, y'all making me look real good, because there are good projects. So I hate to see this project not go. I think it's a good project. People knew housing. Right now, Newport News is last place, seventh, in the Hampton Roads area for the most housing for the underserved, the income tax credit. We're number seven. That's last place. Everybody in Newport News is not poor. Some people want to live in luxury housing. And for this to be the first, and I'm going to say it, black developer, builder, lawyer, to build luxury apartments in my city during Black History Month, I'm excited about it. I'm ecstatic about it. We always had this opportunity. Nowhere near had this opportunity.
Never.
And right now, we have the opportunity, and it's a problem. Why can't, we all smart. The city suggests, the city manager, they request approval. Let's, let's make this project happen. We always said we want developing in Newport News, but do we really want any developing in Newport News? I see a lot of vape shops going up Irving Avenue, so maybe we, maybe we going to be the specialty vape shops in Newport News. Because right now, we're not giving people an opportunity to build in Newport News. To make it happen, to make it work. To make it happen, to make it work. They said I wouldn't be in this seat, but I'm here, thanks to my mother back there, darling and lord. They didn't think the council would ever look like this, but now it does. We're going to continue to fight for what's right, I'm going to continue to fight for this city, whether it pass or don't pass, but when I ran for election, I said I'm going to run for development of Newport News. I know this city needs new schools, I know this city needs new technology, I know this city needs to invest in our youth. People say we don't want to raise the taxes, where do you think the money going to come from? It comes from development. It comes from people moving into our city, developing in our city. I always tell people, Newport News is what? Open for business. For so long, people felt like Newport News was closed for business, and it might have been. But this is 2025, I'm open for business. I want to see young entrepreneurs have the opportunity to come in Newport News and feel proud, like, man, we could go to Newport News, that's a council. Like when I hear all over, I'm in DC, I'm in Richmond, y'all are doing a thing in Newport News. Y'all are getting things happening. Y'all are a city, y'all is a city who know how to make things a yes versus making things a no. I have great pride in this city. We talking about 200 cars? I look at my apartment complex every day, because I'm in the front, and that's 308 units. And I may see, because I'm always on my balcony, I may see one car pass out there every three or four minutes. So we got eight, we got 308 units. We're talking about 200, what, 120 units? Come on now, we can make things happen. It's all about if we want to make things happen. So I commend you, developers, I commend the team, I commend everybody who came out here today. If it pass, it pass, if it don't, y'all did a good fight and continue to do business in Newport News, because this is a councilman who wants development, this is a councilman who want to give people opportunities, and I want to see this city continue to thrive, because we want to build more schools, we want to build more things for our youth, and the only way we're going to do it is increase our tax backs and welcome businesses to Newport News, and we're going to continue to make our city the best city to live in. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Coleman.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I do have a technical question here, and it's about the comprehensive plan, and I will direct this to the manager. When we do redo our comprehensive plan, and I was reading the summary from planning, and it says they do recommend medium density for this lot. Why don't we just automatically change the designation at that point? Because it is currently R4, but the comprehensive plan says it recommends R7.
Thank you for the question, and I'll ask Sheila McAllister, our director of planning, to respond.
Sir, I think you're confusing the zoning and the land use. The land use is what guides, and the zoning implements the comprehensive plan. So the comprehensive plan is giving you a recommendation of what it feels that that land use should be. The owner would have to come back and rezone the property to that medium density.
Okay. So then, okay, so I have one more question since we have your podium. When I was reading the conclusion from planning, and it says this is going to provide a new housing type to the area, isn't there an apartment complex that is connected to this property already?
There is an apartment complex that is adjacent to this piece of property. And then on the other side of this piece of property is R, I think is duplex, what is it? R, yeah, R5, R5, which is townhouse duplex. So when we were looking at it as far as land use, because of the density in that area already, and because the area brought in that planned residential development and brought in the R5 zoning, which is attached housing, even though it doesn't look like it's attached, we felt that this was a good compromise in between those two.
Okay. And also to get clarity, I know that the vice mayor had mentioned this. What is our current rental rate in the city of Newport News?
You mean vacancy rate?
No, rental rate, so renters versus homeowners.
Oh, renters versus homeowners, majority renters. I think homeowners is a little under 50%.
Okay, very good. And I do have a question for Mr. Keels. When you say...
Sir, you can come up, sir.
Yeah. Good evening, sir. Thank you for coming down today. I always get a little confused when I hear from people, when I hear from developers, and they say affordable housing and market rate. So what exactly does that mean? When you say, is it affordable or is it market rate?
It's both, and so...
Because the market right now, as my colleagues have mentioned, is very high in the city of Newport News.
Correct.
The market rate. So it doesn't sound like that is affordable.
Will be about $500 a month less than what he, than what Councilman Ely indicated. So, yeah, so you have, market rate is one step below luxury. And normally, market rate apartments, you know, you don't have a parking garage, you know, so you have to park in a parking lot and walk up to your unit. But once you enter your unit, it has all of the luxury, the luxury feel. So we'll have, like I said, stainless steel appliances, you know, the luxury vinyl flooring, all of the luxury fixtures, you know, but our rents will be less than luxury. So we're above, you know, workforce, but less than luxury. So like for a two-bedroom in this community, you'll probably be around $1,650, which is not that much more than the community that's right behind us. And our units are going to be a lot better, you know, so that's what's considered market rate.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Thank you, sir. Is there any further or new discussion from council? Okay, so I'll wrap up, and then we can just get to the roll. So as mayor, I do not like 4-3 votes, because a 4-3 vote, I think is what's going to happen tonight. That means that no one is going to be happy. The last time we had a 4-3 vote was, I believe, in the North, when we were talking about the joint Chick-fil-A Wawa. I think that's the last time we had a 4-3 vote.
Correct.
And what I, I will say again what I said back then. As mayor, the way that this city is drawn up is two council members represent each district, the North, the Central, and the South. And so when there is a controversial topic, I lean toward whose district it's going to be in. This is currently in the North District, and that is the vice mayor as well as Councilman Harris. I believe their opinions on it are known. That's the first note. The second note is the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is the sort of gatekeeper to city council. If they do a 4-3 vote, that's when I take a look at it. They did a super majority against it. I think one person may have switched their vote, but what it appears is the majority of Planning Commission have said this is not ready at this time. However, I also think that this process from a city side could have been done better. I am involved in probably most of the development that happens in the city. I did not know about this until probably four days ago. That's not fair to you, Mr. Keels. Other developers, we would have facilitated more community discussion, and we would have prevented this. We would have known before. So that is on us, that is our bad. So two things can be true at once. So you have my apologies. In my mind, as I close, this comes down to risk tolerance, right? The question is, could this work? Yes. Could it fail? Yes. All right, I think at this time, we don't know. I do think people deserve an opportunity, and I think we can work on our process. But I am going to continue to lean on the members of whose district that it's going to be. And if they feel a certain way, then I will back them up, and that goes for any development in the city. If it's in the South, I will lean on John and Tina. If it's in the Central, I will lean on Cleon and Rob. If it's the North, I'll lean on the district. So that's where it's going to go. We'll see where the vote comes out, but is there, there's no further discussion at this time? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Harris?
Against.
Mayor Jones?
Against.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Against.
Councilman Coleman?
Against.
Councilman Ealing?
Four.
Motion failed. Three, four.
Got you. And so at this time, if you want to leave, we can take like one minute so that you can exit. And I will say this, this is not a no, this is not a right now, and so I look forward to sitting down with you, and we can find a way forward. That includes city staff sitting down, making sure that the process is the same for everyone. So we're going to get some things done, but thank you. Page three, we'll take a minute. If you want to exit, you can leave at this time. Thank you. Just give it to the clerk. We'll take about 30 more seconds, if that's okay? Thank you.
Listen, when this is over, can we all go upstairs?
I don't want to talk to y'all.
You should.
No.
I bet you do.
No, I don't.
I bet you do.
Let's, Madam Clerk, you want to do a reset? Can we make a...
What?
Is there a motion to recess or no?
Yes. Motion, can we...
At this, can we make a motion to recess, Madam Clerk?
Sure.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, a temporary recess.
Temporary.
Thank you.
Who made the motion?
I did.
Second.
It's been moved in second at this time, call the roll.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ealing?
Four.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Thank you, we'll take a 10-minute recess. Do I need to gavel back in?
Is that what the...
Yes, okay, let's do it. Okay, at twenty thirty-five, we gavelled back in. We're going to start with page thirty-seven. Item E two is a request to adopt an ordinance granting conditional use permit number Charley Uniform dash two zero two four dash zero zero one four to New Market Out Parcels LLC and Green Clean Auto Wash to allow for the construction and operation of a car wash facility located at point eight four acre parcel located at six one zero two Jefferson Avenue, Zone C one retail commercial. At this time, do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir.
I see that we do. We'll go with Tyler Rosa and then Grace Henderson. Thanks for waiting.
No problem. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. My name is Tyler Rose. I'm a local attorney with the law firm Williams Mullin. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Green Clean Auto Wash. The applicant has reviewed the conditions and finds them acceptable. A little background on Green Clean, they are a Hampton Roads company, now own and operate express car washes throughout Virginia and North Carolina with the majority of their locations here in Hampton Roads. Green Clean applies what it calls a Disney perfect standard to all of its locations, meaning that it prides itself on providing the highest level of customer service possible and always provides enhanced landscaping when available, which they've done so here. Green Clean also prides itself on being a good community member. The vacuums for this site, for instance, will be free during business hours, and the site was purposely designed to allow for public access of the vacuums without needing to pay for a car wash. Green Clean has what it calls the Green Clean Careers Program, which provides granted donations to local community programs and nonprofits. Also makes car washes available for local fundraisers and career opportunity, provides career opportunities for its employees, promoting internally to managerial positions and providing long-term career opportunities to its employees. Green Clean also specializes in revitalizing particularly difficult sites. If you may have looked at the parcel here, it's a very tight parcel. It, Green Clean worked very closely with staff on designing this site to address a number of staff question and concerns, including flipping the site, making the entrance internal to the site, so it's not, there's no access on Jefferson Avenue, and ensuring the parking and the vacuum stations are behind the building, and providing a large landscape buffer along the road and the building. Green Clean is excited about the opportunity to repurpose this constrained parcel into a state-of-the-art car wash facility. And Green Clean thinks this is a great location for this project. It's conducted market analysis and studies to show that this location will support a car wash, and it's following a national trend for more car wash facilities. Its location is well-located on a busy corridor surrounded by commercial uses and other drive-through uses, and it's not close to any residences. Additionally, as noted in the staff report, the proposed use complies with the city's zoning ordinance requirements and comprehensive plan. Therefore, Green Clean respectfully requests your approval here tonight, and thank you for your time and consideration. I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Grace Henderson?
Yes, hi, my name is Grace Henderson. I'm with the firm of Kimbley Horn, and we are the civil engineer on the project. Tyler hit missed the points on the landscape, site layout, but we did work quite a bit with city staff to get that updated. I guess one other item I'll add to what Tyler discussed. Green Clean typically provides enhanced landscape plans, so exceeding code, city code minimums, and worked through that with city staff during site plan and final design. So, yeah, any, any questions on the layout, I'm happy to address.
I think we're good, thanks, ma'am.
Thank you.
At this time, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilwoman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Sorry, I forgot to hit the, it's fine.
Forgot to vote.
We did, we did verbal, we're okay.
Thank you.
Uh, motion to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilwoman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Thank you, consent agenda. Item F contains the following items. Page sixty-six, minutes of the joint work session of February eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Page ninety, minutes of the work session of February eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Page one sixteen, minutes of the regular meeting of February eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Page one thirty-five, resolution in support of Dr. Christopher Woodbury. Motion to approve the consent agenda, item F one through F four, all-inclusive.
So move.
Second.
Move it and second, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilwoman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Thank you. Other City Council actions, next on our agenda, page one thirty-nine, item G one, Mr. Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Item G one is a request to approve a resolution adopting the revised Newport News City Council handbook. The handbook serves as a reference guide containing excerpts from the City Charter and Code of Newport News, the Code of Virginia, city policies, and materials provided to elected officials by the Virginia Municipal League. It has been updated to reflect recent revisions. City Council adopts the handbook biennially following elections. It may be amended by a majority vote of the elected council members, except for rules mandated by law. Once adopted, the handbook establishes council policies and procedures in addition to those required by law. I recommend approval.
At this time, I see that we have no speakers. Motion to approve the resolution.
So move.
Second.
Move it and second, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilwoman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Thank you, page one ninety-two, item G two, Mr. Manager.
Item G two is a request to adopt an ordinance to amend and reordain City Code, Chapter fifteen, Elections, Article one, Voting Precincts, Section fifteen through forty-nine, absentee voting in person. The General Register proposes establishing a permanent satellite office at the Denby Community Center for use before every election, expanding beyond the two-week period outlined in ordinance number seven nine nine four dash two four. This change enhances voter access, particularly for forty thousand registered voters in the North District, by reducing wait times and balancing the voting population across the City Council districts. The new office will promote equal access to early voting and improve overall efficiency. I recommend approval.
I see we have no speakers. Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So move.
Second.
Move it and second, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilwoman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Thank you. Page one ninety-six, item G three, Mr. Manager.
Item G three is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute an amendment to the lease by and between the City of Newport News and the Industrial Development Authority for the restaurant facility located at two two nine five Harbor Road. City Council has requested to approve a fifteen-year extension of the city's lease with the Industrial Development Authority for two two nine five Harbor Road, ensuring it remains in place through December thirty-first, twenty forty. The extension supports the sublease to forty-one on Harbor, the restaurant tenant chosen through an Industrial Development Authority issued RFP. Renovations are in progress, and all existing lease terms will remain unchanged. I recommend approval.
Thank you, I see we have no speakers. Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So move.
Move it and second it, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilwoman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Thank you, page two oh three, item G four, Mr. Manager.
Item G four is a request to adopt a resolution accepting a conveyance of property located at six eight zero Turnberry Boulevard from the Industrial Development Authority of the City of Newport News, Virginia. City Council has requested to approve the conveyance of a four point four five acre parcel at six eight zero Turnberry Boulevard from the Industrial Development Authority. This site is planned for the future fire station, Fire Station Number eleven, which is currently located at Newport News Williamsburg International Airport. The new site will enhance emergency response operations. The station's design is underway, consistent with our CIP conversations, and construction is anticipated during the fall of twenty twenty-five. I recommend approval.
I see we have no speakers. Motion to approve the resolution.
So move.
Second.
Move it and second, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilwoman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Thank you, appropriations, item H, Mr. Manager.
Item H one is a request to approve a resolution appropriating thirty thousand dollars from the African American Mayors Association Economic Mobility Leadership Institute grant. Newport News was selected as one of twelve cities to participate in the twenty twenty-four Economic Mobility Leadership Institute, a year-long program launched by the African American Mayors Association and funded by the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. After months of training, the city received a thirty thousand dollar grant award to support its Newport News Breakthroughs and Wealth Building Initiative, which is currently located and housed on a programmatic basis at two zero two zero five in Wealth Building Initiative in twenty twenty-five. The program is operated at the Brooks Crossing Innovation and Opportunity Center. I recommend approval. And the second appropriation item for you this evening is item H two. Item H two is a request to approve a resolution appropriating six hundred thirty-nine thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars of additional fiscal year twenty twenty-five street and highway maintenance state revenue to the Department of Public Works for residential street reconstruction and resurfacing contracts. The total FY twenty twenty-five allocation from VDOT has increased, and the additional funds will be used for the specified projects. As required, the funds will be recorded in general fund initially and transferred to the Street Highway Maintenance Fund upon state certification. I recommend approval of all the appropriations.
See, we have no speakers. I'm sorry, motion to approve item H one and H two.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? I just want to say thank you to Owen and that entire team with the Economic Mobility Institute grant. That's a lot of meetings, and that's thirty thousand dollars that we're able to get to accelerate that program. So thanks for all the hard work, Owen. At this time, we call the roll.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilwoman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Thank you, citizen comments, item I. I will call each name in the order appears in front of me. Citizen comments on matters remained at City Council. Michael McCabe?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, what I'm here tonight is to propose something brand-new for the City of Newport News that will help dramatically improve its finances, specifically a permanent fund. Now, permanent funds are, there are a number of states in the United States, most famously Alaska, that have permanent funds, but it's never been attempted at the county level before. What a permanent fund is, it's, it's essentially, it works like retirement. You put money into principal, you never subtract the principal, and the only money you ever spend or utilize is passive interest income. My proposal with the permanent fund is to establish one here for the City of Newport News and use this passive income to help cover the overhead costs. Because if we can cover a percentage of the city's overhead and, you know, routine unavoidable expenses with passive income, then that can allow the city to reduce the tax burden. I, Congress, I, commit...
Take your time.
Tonight. You mentioned tonight, you know, you want Newport News to be open for business. One of the ways in which we can definitely promote a lot of good business in the City of Newport News is by reducing the tax burden. If we could get rid of the sales tax, if we could get rid of personal property taxes by covering, without having to cut the city's, you know, expenditures. Passive income is a game changer. There's only so much money that can be taxed before it becomes ruinous, but the theoretical upper limit of passive interest income, depending on savings, is much higher. And again, this is not a quick fix. This is going to take time. Alaska's been doing this since nineteen seventy-six, but it is possible.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Carol Car cuff?
Thank you, I'm Carol Car cuff, like a car in the cuff on your pants. I live in Newport News at one ninety-seven Revelle Drive, two three six oh eight. I've come to make a request again, I think I made it in January. I enjoy getting down and attending the community meetings that we have. I think it's important for as many people that we can get to know what's really going on in our city. So, I'm asking, please have each of our city community centers post the city council meetings on their marquees. Most of them have marquees, I've mentioned this before. I live and participate at the Denby Community Center on Warwick. It's a straightaway, it's a very busy, very visual place. But I was really disappointed last week when I came to exercise class on Wednesday morning, and the trucks were there to clean up from the Tuesday meeting. I said, oh, what's, what's going on? And when they told me that there was a community meeting the day, the night before, I was really disappointed because I don't drive too much anymore at night. My daughter brings me down here. But for our city as a whole to know more about what's going on, I think that's really important. I don't take a newspaper, and honestly, I seldom go online. So, it's what I see, what I visually notice is going on. But we have two meetings twice a month, and it would be really great if our district leaders, I live in the North District, if our district leaders would call the supervisor of each of the community centers and give the go-ahead to go ahead and post the date, the time, and when the next meeting is going to be held. The week prior to the council meeting itself. As I said, I do attend the Denby Community Center, and it's a great center. Y'all did a really good job in planning that. I don't think any... I don't think any of you were around when it was planned and built, but you did a good job keeping it up. Well, it's been there about ten or twelve years. But it's a very nice community center, very well-upkept. Please help advertise our meetings. They are important to our local area. And I have one other. I'd like to thank all of you and keep it going for our city three-one-one information telephone. It's really handy to find out when the meetings are going to be, when the trash is going to be picked up, or what's going on. But I thank you all for the time that you give, you give to us. God bless and take care and stay healthy. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
If I could just respond real quick. The next meeting is at Christopher Newport. No, that's not the Demby Community Center, but on March eleventh, if I'm correct.
Yes.
It's at Christopher Newport.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Request for the floor.
Yep.
Mr. Manager, is it possible to print at the Demby Community Center on a sheet of paper and post when our council meetings are? Is that doable?
That sounds pretty complicated, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Could you please make that happen?
Not tonight.
Thank you, sir.
And just for another point, do we usually put it somewhere aside from the website when we're going to change the meetings?
I... I'm looking out. I don't see a representative from communications, but I think I've been taking notes, and certainly you have a motion before you that I'll introduce under new business to take action on moving the next meeting. I can do one better than that. We've, in accordance with council guidance, prepared the rest of the meetings for the entire year, so we can bring those forward. You all can adopt them all at one time, and we can post that schedule at community centers, on social media, on our website. We'll make it very visible.
Thank you.
Thank you. Miss... I guess it's John James is next. John James, and then Jaquana Phillips.
How you doing, Mayor? Council?
Good evening.
Councilmen and women.
Good evening.
I know if y'all remember me from last year, the pastor, apostle pastor that's inside of Saint Paul's Church. And I want to thank y'all for doing a great job with having the churches all come together and taking care of the homeless throughout this winter, which made me shift in such a good job. It made me shift into prevention. I first want to say that I am now a resident of Newport News because I'm from New York. And now I also am a business owner because I have an LLC out here and inside of Newport News. And the thing about the LLC that we have is that we started doing prevention from people that are homeless, stopping them from getting evicted. So far, from January, from this year that stopped already to two thousand to right now, we stopped eleven evictions, all right? And then we also, the ones that did get evicted, we stopped them from becoming homeless by transitioning them into affordable homes, which was a hot topic earlier, right? So I use that source. So it's kind of... It kind of works. But at the same time, I would just wanted to say that the church is behind it all. And we have to, you know, that's almost a two-hundred-year-old building, and I'm looking to do repairs on it. So we put out permits to try to see how we can go about to fix the building the proper way. So I was there earlier talking to the lady, and she gave me instructions on how to handle the inside, the infrastructure of what the do's and don'ts are, and also to get the proper, how should I say, people that's licensed and classified to do that. So we have all that in order. But I'm just letting you know what we're doing moving forward. Now, me being also a pastor slash business owner, I'm looking to get busy with business, sir. And so we have a lot of new services that's coming in that's going to employ a lot of people, and I'm working on reform with the homeless people. What I mean by reform is, I was explaining to Councilwoman Vick that it takes a process for somebody that's homeless than to just jump them into an apartment because their mindset is not... They're so busy combating with the elements and a different lifestyle. So we have temporary housing where we put people in for a short term and then transition them from that point to an apartment that allows them to be a better, sufficient, you know, a tenant as opposed to bringing the reckless behavior of they used to without reform, putting them in an apartment and then having that situation happen. So I hope y'all support what we're doing. If y'all have any ideas or any ways that y'all can work with me and helping the church because that's where I'm at, and then also the business projects. What's the name? Clean, all right? And John, y'all the guys handle the South Side?
Your man Tina.
Oh, Tina. So, okay. So, yeah, so I look to work with y'all, but I'm also in a Demby area, too. So that's where I moved at. All right? Sorry. I know I took up my time.
You're good. Thank you, sir.
God bless you.
Yes, sir. And Jaquina Phillips?
It's actually Jaquana Phillips.
Sorry. Thanks.
Good evening, members of the city council. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. Before you, my name is Jaquana Phillips, and I come before you as a dedicated career advisor, mentor, life skills coach, I mean, many titles, just a proud member of the community. I'm also soon to begin my law school journey driven by commitment to advocacy and service. I'm here because I believe in the potential of our city and its people, and I believe that we have an opportunity to make a lasting investment in that potential. Today, I'm asking for your support in establishing a comprehensive career center, expanding affordable tutoring for our children, and developing accessible recreational programs for our community. Three... These three initiatives are vital to fostering growth in our community for our well-being in our residents. But before we delve deep into these issues, I must express my concern that we, as a society, are moving away from what elected officials are supposed to do. The people have hired you to do a job, and that means they can also fire you. Too often, members of this community do not engage in their civic duty, and as a result, decisions are made without their feedback and knowledge. In today's climate, now that... Now is not the time to be like in an elected position for your own personal gain, for the liking of your name, or to perpetuate cycles that keep Black and Brown and other marginalized people in poverty. Now is the time for true leadership, for service, and for building a city that uplifts every resident. First, the need for a career center is clear and urgent. Too many individuals in our communities struggle to find suitable employment because they lack access to career counseling, job training, and professional development resources. A well-equipped career center would provide resume assistance, interview coaching, skill-building workshops, and direct connections to local employers. This investment would not only empower job seekers but strengthen our local workforce and economy. Second, our children deserve every possible chance to succeed academically, and that means ensuring accessible... Access to affordable, high-quality tutoring services. Many families in our city cannot afford private tutoring, leaving students without the individualized support they need to thrive. Expanding affordable tutoring programs will help close achievement gaps, improve graduation rates, and set our children up for a path to lifelong success. Finally, recreation is not a luxury. It is essential. Accessible recreation programs promote physical health well-being, mental health well-being, and community cohesion. By investing in safe, well-maintained parks, sports leagues, and after-school activities, we provide our youth with constructive outlets and help deter negative influences. Recreation brings people together and strengthens our social fabric of our city. Members of the city council, these initiatives represent an investment in our future, career center, affordable tutoring, and health recreation. Thank you for your time and your service. Also, thank y'all for keeping my seat warm because I want one in the future. Y'all have a good one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is new business. I'll turn it over to the... To Mr. Archer, city manager.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I would like to extend a sincere appreciation to all of our work crews, our city staff, everyone who had a hand to roll... Excuse me. It's been a long night. For everyone who had a hand and a role in helping this city respond and recover to the winter storm or snowmageddon, as some of us call it. We, of course, activated a public shelter for the homeless. We worked around the clock through our Department of Public Works to make sure that all of our primary and secondary roads, even our residential neighborhoods, were cleared to the best of our ability. And for an average of approximately tangents of snow that fell across Newport News, we were probably kind of in the middle of the snow band. We saw up to twelve inches or more on the South Side, but clearly, it's the most snow fall that we've experienced for a long time on the peninsula. And I just wanted to extend my sincere gratitude and appreciation to everyone who had a hand in keeping the citizens of Newport News safe. And I hope that many people enjoyed the sledding hill at the park. The second item I wanted to make reference to is the One City Marathon, which is occurring this weekend. The One City Marathon has just been an incredible event now. Owen, you'll correct me. This is the eleventh year that we have hosted the One City Marathon. It's an opportunity to connect the city from one end to the other, and residents come out and cheer on the runners. We have so many people in the community and others who travel here to participate in the marathon. It's a great community spirit, and I want to thank our residents for putting up with this. It's a little bit of a traffic headache, but I think we've seen from the growth in the race over the years that we see a lot of potential in continuing to sponsor the One City Marathon, and many of our residents, of course, enjoy the recreational and the physical challenges, the physical tests that they meet with personal best every year from competing. So thank you to everyone who will come out and participate, and I'd like to invite everyone to come down on this Sunday. We have the culmination of the marathon. We begin at seven o'clock at Newport News Park, and we probably expect some of the runners to cross the finish line in downtown in roughly two and a half hours, give or take. So if you want to be here at the finish line, you want to be downtown no later than really than nine... Nine-thirty to really take advantage of everything and see the runners, cheer them on as they cross the finish line. The third item that I have for council this evening is I would like to make a motion, recommend a motion to city council. Before you, you have a draft resolution to change the location of the March eleventh, twenty twenty-five regular council meeting to the Gaines Theater at Christopher Newport University, and I recommend approval. And I'd like to request a motion from city council at this time. Thank you.
So moved. That's our decision.
Let's do it. Let's call the roll.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Motion carry. Seven zero.
Thanks. I'm going to push ahead. City Attorney?
Nothing, sir.
City Clerk? Councilman Long?
I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight to share some concerns or questions or provide comments to us. Do appreciate that. I also want to... And this didn't happen in Newport News, but I wanted to offer my condolences to the families of the Virginia Beach officers that lost their lives in the line of duty. I read in an article that talked about how the most dangerous time for police officers during a traffic stop, and made me remember that we had lost an officer, too, a few years ago behind a traffic stop. So condolences to the family, but there's also thanks to all the police officers that risk their lives every day to keep our city safe. Only other thing is, good luck to the marathon runners at this weekend. I said I was going to participate in one of the races last year. I said I was going to do it this year. Didn't do it. So I'm just asking for maybe a reminder a few months out, six months out, to kind of get ready for...
Six years.
Get ready for at least that family K, one K, or whatever it is. I could at least participate in that next year, so... But good luck to all the marathon runners. Enjoy this weekend here in the city of Newport News. That's all I have.
Councilman Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. I just want to join Councilman Long in giving my condolences to the Virginia Beach Police Department and the families and friends of Officer Cameron Girvin and Christopher Reese who lost their lives over the weekend on a traffic stop. And while they're protecting the citizens of Virginia Beach, and it does hit close to home, just a few years ago, we had lost an officer, and, you know, it's just always a tough time, not only for the communities, but also for all of our brave men and women who put on the uniform every day, they go back out onto the streets, and also especially for those families who have to watch their loved ones go out and not being sure if they're going to be coming home after the end of their shift. So just our thoughts and prayers go out to them. Also, want to give our condolences, my condolences, to the Newport News Public School family and also the family of Michelle Price. She's the Director of Public Information and Community Involvement for the school system. Michelle was a tremendous asset at the school system. I always remember her as being the first person I would see when I would walk in for a school board meeting, and she just always had a smile on her face, and she was through and through Newport News. So I know that's a tremendous loss, not only for her family, but for our school system and the community. So our thoughts and prayers go out to her and her family. Also, wanted to thank Development, Parks and Rec, Planning for a very nice sports and event center feasibility study presentation. It was a couple weeks ago, but a lot of great information. It was a lot of good engagement. People are pretty excited. I know this is the very first step in seeing if, you know, that that's going to fit here in the City of Newport News, but thank you very much. It's just got everybody really thinking and excited about something happening here in the city. Also, want to say congratulations to the newest academy graduates from Newport News Police Department. I had the opportunity to attend, and Chief always puts on a great graduation. It had the Warwick High School Choir there, the St. National Anthem. We had a young adult police commissioner that was there. They gave an address to the new graduates, was tremendously impactful. And also want to thank the young adult commissioners that came out tonight. Very impressive group of young people. We spoke briefly at the work session about we had our inaugural city council public safety committee meeting. My co-chair, Councilwoman Vick, and I hosted all the public safety professionals from the community and from our city. We're very excited about this, and it was our first meeting, just kind of figuring out which direction we're going to go, but I think some great things are going to come from this committee. Also, want to express our appreciation to our Commonwealth's Attorney Howard Gwynn, Chief Drew, Attorney General Mieres, and all of our law enforcement partners that assisted with the arrest of the suspect responsible for the murder of Keir Johnson and her eight-month-old daughter, Chloe Johnson. I know that this is not the end of the jury, it's the very beginning of it, but we're moving towards some closure for that family, and I just want to say thank you for... I mean, it's been years in the making, but our law enforcement partners did not forget about that family and those... That child, so thank you so much. Also, want to give another thanks to everybody who was involved with dealing with the snow. Overall, the response was fantastic. Everybody was so appreciative, from Public Works to, you know, City Manager's Office, to our faith community, our nonprofits that opened up their doors for shelters for the homeless, and I know it was a tremendous undertaking, but you guys did a fantastic job. And then last, but not least, let's... I just want to wish a happy birthday to Chief Drew. I think that was on Sunday. Also, Councilman Harris, when was your birthday? Is it coming up?
Fifteenth.
The fifteenth of March?
Fifteenth of February.
Oh, I missed it, man. I apologize.
You said happy birthday to me.
Did I say happy birthday? Did I say it publicly?
Yeah, you said it.
Oh, damn, that's right, I did. But I also want to wish my son Jacob a happy sixteenth birthday. He is, he's, he'll be turning sixteen this weekend, so I just want to wish that knucklehead a happy birthday, so, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
So, you mentioned everyone's birthday except your own, which was just yesterday.
That's, that's crazy.
Happy birthday, Rob, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Rob.
Appreciate it, yeah.
Uh, Councilwoman Vic?
Uh, well, I just want to first to say, as we're talking about children, my beautiful daughter, Tia Shae Vic is here with me tonight, thank you so much for coming, and I just really want to thank, um, me and this guy, grew up in the same neighborhood together, and I'm just so honored to be able to say he's our Director of Public Works, Frank James, you all did such a great job. It made me feel so good waking up during the snowstorm to see all the trucks moving all the snow off of my street, and, and to get the calls from citizens that, who were saying, what a great job Newport News has done, so thank you, uh, and I really appreciate you and how well you have represented as the, uh, head of, of Public Works. And that's all I have, that's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Ely?
I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, I already got the, uh, word from Cleon, it's good, beside him, he'd be like, no sermon tonight, John. But real quick, I just want to give my condolences to the school system, um, Michelle Price, she was very, um, inspirational, inspirational when I was on the school board, and to that family, I had the opportunity to last week to take them a flower from city council, as well as give our condolences, so I'm just very sad for them. Also, unfortunately, I lost my, one of my good friends and one of my former employees, um, a couple of days ago, she was hit by a drunk driver, thirty-five years old, Tanya Foster, so give my prayers go out to her family, um, it's been really rough, I've been at city council meeting tonight, planning a funeral at the same time, so my heart goes out to her, her family, and just I encourage people to just drink responsible. Tanya was just so much, she was full of life, um, best employee I ever had, I mean, never, okay, Tana, never called, never called out of work, she was just the, um, A-one employee. So, when I got that, that phone call, I ran, went straight to Centerra Hospital to be by her side, but unfortunately, my, she's not with us, so my heart goes out to the families. Also, thank you to Abby Baptist for stepping up and handling the services for us. I also had the opportunity to go to the Men's Rise Conference at Heritage High School, I think the mayor went as well, was really great, um, attended, just to see so many young men from out, throughout Newport News, get so many left, life lessons, it was just very impactful, and the young men was just so excited just to learn, learn about real estate, learn about the value of, learn about the value of the dollar, learn about investing. So, I think they had over three hundred young men from Newport News High School students participating in that, and the One City Marathon, I am excited about that, but I would not be there on Sunday, that's the, uh, marathon, I will be there on Saturday, I think, for the Nautical Mile or something like that, so, um, I'm excited about the marathon, um, the One City Marathon, and I will try to, next year, every year, someone will run the marathon, but I'm going to start training now, so I can run the Mon, City Marathon next year, and that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Harris?
Uh, yes, uh, I just want to echo some of the same sentiments and extending my condolences to the Virginia Beach Police Department, and also to, uh, Ms. Michelle Price, um, Tere Price, the Director of the Newport News Public Schools Television, uh, uh, my, your family is in my prayers, as you've been, they've been a part of the communications for Newport News Public Schools for years, so much so that I would consider Ms. Price the voice of Newport News, whenever you heard anything regarding Newport News, it was her beautiful voice, so we're going to miss her, and my prayers are extended to her family. And, uh, just, uh, real quick, I just wanted to say congratulations to Woodside High School's basketball team, Demby High School's basketball team, as they both have an opportunity to bring a state championship to our city, uh, and to all the other student athletes that are taking, taking, um, they're active in the state playoffs that are taking place this week, uh, just wanted to wish my, uh, congratulations for getting there, and then wishing them good luck as they continue to proceed, to proceed to represent Newport News, and that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor?
Um, yes. I want to also offer my condolences to the Virginia Beach, uh, Police Department. In addition to that, I would like to send condolences to the Price family, um, and the Newport News Public Schools family, uh, as everyone has already stated, Ms. Price was a phenomenal person. Um, when I think of anything Newport News Public Schools communications, communications related, I think of her. So, uh, my heart and my prayers will go out to them. And then the last thing I'll mention is, um, I'll echo the same sentiments, Public Works did a phenomenal job, um, we all handled that very, very well, the snow, I think snow, snowmageddon, I think the manager mentioned, but nevertheless, uh, Frank, you all did a phenomenal job, and if I'm missing somebody, anyone else that was involved, thank you. Um, your citizens appreciate it, and I appreciate it. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Great, I'll wrap up, I think everything that's been said, just, uh, I don't want to double down or echo anything, but I'll just say, just thank you for everyone who who stayed with us to the end, uh, local government, sometimes messy, but at the end, we're always going to get it done, so let's all strive to, toward a more perfect union. Senator Jern?